I told him I'm going to bring you up there.
Seeing that no one's coming up, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Will council please overlook that as presented? Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. Counsel, have you looked over the agenda as the consent agenda is presented? I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Willis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Another council action, item number one, item five, item number one, take action and settlement agreement for pre-litigation. Our attorney, Dancy Jones, sir.
Mayor, council, how are you all doing tonight?
Doing good.
This is an automobile accident involving Ms. Patricia Flores and an Odessa Police Department vehicle on June seventeen, twenty twenty at approximately seven twenty-five P M near the twenty-one hundred block of East Eighth Street here in Odessa. The O P D vehicle struck the driver's side of the vehicle driven by Ms. Flores. Because of the accident, she sustained substantial injuries. Now, unlike the City of Odessa's previous settlements, this is, this does not have a cause number. It has not been filed in the court of law. So, this is a pre-litigation settlement, which was negotiated on behalf of the City of Odessa by Permian Claim Service. This is beneficial because the parties were able to agree to resolve this matter without the need and expense for litigation. The settlement on the table that has been agreed to is seventy-five thousand dollars. So I need a motion and an approval, mayor.
Counsel, do we have any discussion before we move forward? I will entertain a motion for approval for a pre-litigation in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. I have a motion by council member Thompson, second by council, council member White. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you much. We're going to go into a public hearing, item two, open a public hearing to consider approval in request by Arturo Villalobos owner to rezone single-family residence three, light commercial. Mr. Brinley.
Good evening, mayor and council. City mailed out sixteen notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did not receive any written protest and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in this request is located in the nine hundred block of South Muskingum Avenue. It's located northeast of the intersection of South Grant Avenue and South Muskingum Avenue. Site is currently zoned single-family three. It is occupied by a storage yard. Land use in the area does consist of retail and commercial development to the west and the south, and there's single-family residential development to the north and the east of this site. The applicant and the property owner in this case is Arturo Villalobos, and the purpose of the rezone request from single-family three to light commercial would consolidate the zoning of this property. It's currently one lot that happens to have two zoning zones on it. This was done years ago, even before I started employment with the city, so you know it was a long time ago.
Right after the parting of the Red Sea.
Streets weren't even paved yet, so, yeah. The proposed rezone request is not contrary to established land uses in the general area or land use of the city's comprehensive master plan. The rezone would bring the entire property under one zoning designation, which would be light commercial, and it would facilitate the, the development of a auto upholstery shop on this property. The proposed automotive upholstery shop is not out of line with the existing commercial uses in this area. It would be a good complement to the neighborhood, and it would provide a service to the, this neighbor, residents in this area. Planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval to this request. The planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions or go ahead and up for any comments or questions for Mr. Brinley? Mr. Brinley, what, what's going to be on the, on the property?
It.
Have we seen it? Does it look like a shopping center? What, what is it?
No, it'll be a automotive upholstery shop.
Automotive?
Yeah, you, I think the, the shopping center is on the next case when we're, for the S U P.
Okay.
Yeah, this will just be a single building.
They realize this is a flood zone.
Yes, sir, right close to it. It, and it will meet all development code where it will be about one foot above the flood elevation.
Counsel, any, any comments? Member, District One member?
I like it.
Yeah, you're about the third thing that's going on down there. You're doing something right. Seems there's no, no, no more, any, any discussion or comments. I will now entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Swanner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, mayor. We're going to go into a public hearing, item two, open a public hearing to consider approval in request by Arturo Villalobos owner to rezone single-family residence three, light commercial. Mr. Brinley.
Good evening, mayor and council. City mailed out sixteen notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did not receive any written protests, and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in this request is located in the nine hundred block of South Muskingum Avenue. It's located northeast of the intersection of South Grant Avenue and South Muskingum Avenue. Site is currently zoned single-family three. It is occupied by a storage yard. Land use in the area does consist of retail and commercial development to the west and the south, and there's single-family residential development to the north and the east of this site. The applicant and the property owner in this case is Arturo Villalobos, and the purpose of the rezone request from single-family three to light commercial would consolidate the zoning of this property. It's currently one lot that happens to have two zoning zones on it. This was done years ago, even before I started employment with the city, so you know it was a long time ago.
Right after the parting of the Red Sea.
Streets weren't even paved yet, so, yeah. The proposed rezone request is not contrary to established land uses in the general area or land use of the city's comprehensive master plan. The rezone would bring the entire property under one zoning designation, which would be light commercial, and it would facilitate the, the development of a auto upholstery shop on this property. The proposed automotive upholstery shop is not out of line with the existing commercial uses in this area. It would be a good complement to the neighborhood, and it would provide a service to the, this neighbor, residents in this area. Planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval to this request. The planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions or go ahead and up for any comments or questions for Mr. Brinley? Mr. Brinley, what, what's going to be on the, on the property?
It.
Have we seen it? Does it look like a shopping center? What, what is it?
No, it'll be a automotive upholstery shop.
Automotive?
Yeah, you, I think the, the shopping center is on the next case when we're, for the S U P.
Okay.
Yeah, this will just be a single building.
They realize this is a flood zone.
Yes, sir, right close to it. It, and it will meet all development code where it will be about one foot above the flood elevation.
Counsel, any, any comments? Member, District One member?
I like it.
Yeah, you're about the third thing that's going on down there. You're doing something right. Seems there's no, no, no more, any, any discussion or comments. I will now entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Swanner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, we have to open up for a public hearing. I'm so sorry about that. I already did a privilege. So, this is an open hearing. I'm trying to get out of here. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, number two, on this, can't do so by coming forward, stating your name for the record. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I will now close the, the, the open hearing, and we've already took a vote, and so we'll move on. We're going to move to item number three, open a public hearing to consider approval request by Robert Yanez, Lisi Raja LLC owner's specific use permit to allow tavern use in retail one. Mr. Brinley.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out seven notices related to this request. We did not have any of the notices returned, and we did not receive a positive or a negative response to this request. The property involved is located in the forty-one hundred block of Medical Park Drive. It's in suite one hundred and one oh five. Site is zoned retail one. It is occupied by commercial development, and it is a strip center that will have future and existing retail uses. Land use in the general area does consist of retail development to the west. There's multi-family residential development to the north and the east, and vacant land is located south of this site.
Counsel, do we have any comments?
Not finished yet, I was.
Go for it.
Yes, sir. Robert Yanez is a Lisi and the applicant in the, in this request, and the purpose of the request would consider approval of a specific use permit to allow tavern in retail one zoning district. The site plan has been prepared that does indicate the location of the tavern within a retail development. The proposed tavern will have a total floor area of approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. It would be required to have twenty-five parking spaces. This would accommodate a seating capacity of seventy-five people. The retail development has a hundred and twenty total parking spaces, and this does meet all the requirements for this use and for any potential future uses on this site. The planning and zoning commission did approve this request unanimously with adoption of the following conditions. Required parking will need to be paid, paved and striped. Any signs will need to meet zoning ordinance requirements. Adoption of this site plan and review of the permit upon receipt of any neighborhood complaints. This would be considered a temporary permit, and the council would have right of termination for any violation of the terms and conditions of this permit, or if it's determined that there is a negative effect on this site or the adjacent properties, and this would all occur after a public hearing before this council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Thompson?
Randy, is this, this is currently?
Yes, sir, they're also in that shopping center. Yes, sir.
Any more discussion or comments? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, number three, as presented, my best Brinley can do so by coming forward, stating your name for the record. You can do so by coming forward now. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'll close the, the, the open hearing, and we've already took a vote, and so we'll move on. We're going to move to item number three, open a public hearing to consider approval request by Robert Yanez, Lisi Raja LLC owner's specific use permit to allow tavern use in retail one. Mr. Brinley.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out seven notices related to this request. We did not have any of the notices returned, and we did not receive a positive or a negative response to this request. The property involved is located in the forty-one hundred block of Medical Park Drive. It's in suite one hundred and one oh five. Site is zoned retail one. It is occupied by commercial development, and it is a strip center that will have future and existing retail uses. Land use in the general area does consist of retail development to the west. There's multi-family residential development to the north and the east, and vacant land is located south of this site.
Counsel, do we have any comments?
Not finished yet, I was.
Go for it.
Yes, sir. Robert Yanez is a Lisi and the applicant in the, in this request, and the purpose of the request would consider approval of a specific use permit to allow tavern in retail one zoning district. The site plan has been prepared that does indicate the location of the tavern within a retail development. The proposed tavern will have a total floor area of approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. It would be required to have twenty-five parking spaces. This would accommodate a seating capacity of seventy-five people. The retail development has a hundred and twenty total parking spaces, and this does meet all the requirements for this use and for any potential future uses on this site. The planning and zoning commission did approve this request unanimously with adoption of the following conditions. Required parking will need to be paid, paved and striped. Any signs will need to meet zoning ordinance requirements. Adoption of this site plan and review of the permit upon receipt of any neighborhood complaints. This would be considered a temporary permit, and the council would have right of termination for any violation of the terms and conditions of this permit, or if it's determined that there is a negative effect on this site or the adjacent properties, and this would all occur after a public hearing before this council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Thompson?
Randy, is this, this is currently?
Yes, sir, they're also in that shopping center. Yes, sir.
Any more discussion or comments? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, number three, as presented, my best Brinley can do so by coming forward, stating your name for the record. You can do so by coming forward now. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'll close the open hearing and entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman, council member Sprouse, second by council, council member White. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to a resolution authorizing donation of a seven point six five acre tract located in section thirty-five, block forty-two. Mrs. Brooks?
Mayor and city council, this resolution is to authorize the donation to the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation of, for a seven point six five acre tract of land. This will also authorize the city attorney to negotiate the agreement and the deed and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents. Are there any questions for me?
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Just have one, and I believe it was addressed already, but there will be a reverter clause in that contract.
Yes, there will be a reverter clause in the, in the agreement and the deed.
In the agreement, correct. And do we know the time frame that we?
We don't have a, a start date yet. Ms. Miller is here. She could probably address that more with you with Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, but we're working with her on the agreement, and so as far as like the terms and conditions, they will be worked out.
Jill, do you know about?
Thank you. I didn't want to yell from way back there. So it'll have to go through civil engineering and then planning and zoning, and so that period of time will take a couple of months to get started, and then after that, we would get started on plans and, and building. So, we'll do eleven houses. It'll be done in, the first phase will be the infrastructure, and then we would know the exact cost. Once we get that taken care of, then we'll do eleven houses at a time.
Eleven at a time?
Yes, ma'am. So, and then it'll, it'll end up being at ten at the end because there's going to be fifty-three with a park. So, that is what the plan is, to do it in phases, just like the other one. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I'm, I just wanted to say a comment. I'm just excited about this possible venture. I know it's going to be a, a great improvement and great addition to the south side in that area. I've spoken to a few people that live in that area, and they're, they're excited about it. They, they've heard about it, and, so, you know, I'm just praying that everything goes well, and kudos to y'all for, for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have a, a member of the, of the community that wants to be able to speak on this item. Mr. Hopkins can come forward to state your name for the record.
Joey Hopkins.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for, for the, the opportunity to speak. I have to say that compared to your counterparts in Midland, y'all move real quick. I like that. I don't know if it's at night.
Taco Tuesday.
Oh, there you go. So I represent Habitat. This isn't my first time up here. We're trying to get a lot more face time, so y'all know how serious we are about development here. Just as a, a real quick recap, we serve people in the thirty to sixty percent A M I area median income. So these are low-income demographics. It's a demographic that nobody else serves. It's really important, and we're really passionate about it. Habitat's a little bit unique. We're obviously a nonprofit. We sell our houses with a zero percent interest mortgage at cost, so it makes it super affordable. We feel like homeownership transforms people, and, and this is how we do that. We've had a really successful program in, in Midland, and we really dream of expanding that over here in Odessa. We've talked to several of y'all about it, and it's a lot of work, but honestly, it benefits everybody. You know, over the past thirty years in both cities, we've increased the tax base by over thirty million dollars. And so that, that tax base benefits the city. It benefits all the other taxing entities, and it benefits all the, the citizens. So, so everybody wins with, with Habitat houses. Obviously, the, the reason why I'm here to, to speak is earlier in the year, we had, had some conversations with city staff and with a council member about also developing the Rochester tract. Last week, we saw in the newspaper that y'all had met with somebody, and frankly, we were just a little disappointed that we were looped out of that process. We've put a lot of work in, in building relationships over here and being very intentional about what we're doing. And so we were just disappointed that we didn't get a shot to present our plan for that. Of course, we love Odessa Housing Finance Corp. Jill does a wonderful thing, and she has personally helped Habitat immensely. So my goal is not to derail a project, but just to think about in the process of divesting of public land, what does that process look like, and how can we do it in a way where everybody wins? In, in the future, we would love to be part of those conversations. We want y'all to think of us. Jill does a wonderful thing. We don't overlap with what we do, though. She serves a different demographic, and nobody else is serving who we are serving, and it, and it's very, very important. And so, all that to say, I just wanted to, to bring that up and, and to challenge y'all to think through this process in the future. Think through how y'all are picking entities and how those entities can work together and what all that looks like, and how that ultimately benefits the public, right? This is public land essentially, and, and it, it should benefit the, the public. And, and it, it could be a nonprofit. It could be a business. You never know who, who will come out of the woodworks, and ultimately, we want to see whatever benefits Odessa the best. We're super passionate about what, what we're doing, and we want to keep doing it, so thanks.
Thank you. Any, any, any questions?
How many homes a year do you think you're capable of building in Odessa? How many lots do you need?
Great question. We need as many as we can get. That sounds funny, but we don't have a, a proven data point to, to speak of. We, we reacquired this affiliate several years ago, and, and it was kind of in trouble. And so we've been rebuilding and working. We just finished a street, and so we dream of doing about ten to fifteen a year in Odessa, which is what we're doing in Midland. There's no reason why we shouldn't be doing the same things in each town. That affiliate's older and more established, and so that's our goal. It, it, it's hard to say what we could actually do. We have full-time staff. We do build with volunteers, but we have staff that oversee these projects and make sure everything's being built to code and, and all those details.
So if the city came to you and said, "We've got these lots," how many lots would you ask for to get started?
I, I don't want to sound rude, but I want as many as I can possibly get, and the reason being, because there's no way of knowing if we can build fifty houses a year, can we build ten houses a year until we have the land? We've been actively buying land. We're at every tax sale. We, we have a, a, a house we're building on Odessa Street just down from this, so we're, we're active, and we've made a lot of progress in six months or so, but it's hard to say, and if I told you a number, you shouldn't believe it.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I think you have a great organization. I, you know, I don't know anything about the Midland organization, and I, I do think we can give you some help, but I was trying to get a feel for what you're, what you need to get kick-started off into this program.
Land. We have money. We can build these houses. We've got support. We've got companies that want to build with us. But land is a big deal, and, and that's, that's kind of the last domino to fall, I think. This particular tract of land is not going to make or break Habitat or Odessa Housing Finance Corp., but we do need something, and we're, we're proactive about it. We don't expect you to solve these problems for us by any means. That's not your job. But we need your help. I mean, we have a very cheesy saying that it takes a community to build a community, but it's true. I mean, I can't build all these houses. Jill can't build all these houses. All of our production builders can't do it. We all have to work together, and we all have kind of our group. But for Habitat, we need your, we need your buy-in and we need your help. We need y'all to be our cheerleader, and when land comes available to think, hey, let's talk to Habitat. Let's talk to Odessa Housing Finance Corp. Let's talk to any builders, for-profit builders that could maybe do better than either of us, and let's see what we can do. But housing is going to be a big issue. I think I, I talked about this the last time I was here. It's going to get worse. The price of oil going to where it is is good, but we're going to see some challenges from that, and we all need to be prepared. So that, that, that's our, our solution to that.
I have one question. When, when you guys were here, or when you were here, and y'all visited about the Rochester land, was there other property that you also discussed?
There was, in fact. In, in, in those discussions, I think the city had kind of plans for it. It was a smaller tract of land right in that neighborhood, but I think they had that earmarked for a different project.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we, we can build almost anywhere. Obviously, in the city limits is a requirement for us, but this, this tract doesn't make or break us, but we do need something, and truthfully, it's a lot more efficient to build in subdivisions than infill lots, but we do build in infill lots right now, and, and we're happy to keep doing that.
Thank you.
What's the difference in your demographics from yours?
Um, and it's a calculation based on, um, your family size, and it, it's basically a scale of, um, how low income you are, if that makes sense. So she serves, um, low to moderate income, um, and I serve the lowest demographic of those. So all of our folks are hardworking, employed people, but they can't afford a three hundred thousand dollar house. Um, so we provide the opportunity for them to buy it, still be a homeowner, but they are very low income.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Counsel, do you have any discussion on the, uh, on the resolution about the donation of the seven point six five acre tract from the city of Odessa to Odessa Fin, uh, Odessa Housing Finance Corporation?
I would make the motion that we go ahead with this, with this offer to Odessa Housing Finance Corporation.
For the donation?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilman, uh, Councilman Sprouse to, to have any other discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay? Uh, do you want to explain what went down? So noted. Any further discussion? So mo, a motion passes, uh, six to one. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to move on to miscellaneous appointments. Uh, Ms. Grimaldo?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. For the boards and commissions for the tax increment reinvestment zone, the TERS, we had a resignation of Dale Jenkins, and Councilmember Thompson wishes to appoint John Herridge to the board.
What board is that?
TERS.
Oh, TERS. Dale's been retired. Uh, okay, so we have a vacancy and an appointment of.
TERS.
For TERS, but who is it?
John Herridge.
John Herridge. Uh, any discussion? All those, uh, do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Swann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council, uh, Councilmember Willis. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
One more. For the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, we had a resignation of Peggy Dean, and, uh, that position is vacant. So it's council's consideration to appoint who they wish to.
For the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation?
Correct.
I would nominate Thomas Blackstone.
I have a motion by Councilmember Sprouse for appointing, uh, Thomas, Thomas? Thomas Blackstone. Uh, counsel, any discussion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Seeing that there is no more business before the city council, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I have a motion, uh, by Councilmember Swann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council, Councilmember Sprouse. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Everybody be careful going home and to your destinations.